Brian Nagman, Jackson County Attorney.
Phil Gopman, vice chairman of the Haywood County Commissioners. Before we get started, do we have anybody that has something really great to brag on that's going off in your camp?
We got the very first mental health kiosk in all of western North Carolina, in Transylvania County. And I know they've rolled a few more out since, but we are extraordinarily proud to be at number one. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we've got the beginnings of a jail diversion program that we're working on with Meridian, thanks to Vaya as well.
That's great. That's great news to start off with. Okay, Shelley?
All right, well, again, welcome everyone. As you know, we are starting our 2017 schedule for the county commissioner advisory board. It's a pleasure to have members who have been with the board for some time, as well as so many of you members. And I just want to say a special thank you to those that came for orientation early today. And you've been here for a long time now, so we're hoping, we're going to keep it entertaining. You know, we may get up and do some song and dance just to keep it moving. A couple of housekeeping things before we start the agenda. I just wanted you to know in your packet, you have a list of all of the names, email addresses, contact information for you as members. You also in there have a list of myself and Tammy as contacts for the county commissioner advisory board. A special thanks to Tammy Day. She is providing support to this group now. She's done a great job pulling together all the stuff for our first meeting. If you have any questions specific to the advisory board and in any of those meetings, you can contact me through Tammy or myself. Also, on that same piece of paper is information with, again, my contact information, Brian Shubing's contact information, and Sarah's contact information. If you have received a packet of information from Tammy Day in the mail with a return envelope, that is because we need to get some information from you and documents related to making sure that you get your stipend and mileage reimbursed. You basically have to give us your whole life history for those things, or multiple forms. If you need any help with that, Tammy would be available to support you. But all those forms pretty much are self-explanatory. And we did put an envelope for you to return it by. If you could do that, we'd appreciate it. Tonight, you have a mileage form that Tammy passed out. If you will make sure to fill that out and don't forget to sign where you're supposed to sign. The meeting type is, where I think it says meeting, what meeting were you attending? If you just want to use the acronym CCAB for county commissioner advisory board, and round trip from wherever you started to this destination. Lastly, housekeeping things. In the past, this group has met on the fourth Tuesday of every month. We spend a lot of time trying to look at your calendars for your board of commissioner meetings and looking at those, trying to plan a meeting day once a quarter that doesn't interfere with any of your commission meetings. Tammy sent out a survey doodle to you. We have some alternate dates we wanted you to look at. We have the first, second, or third Wednesday that would be open once a quarter. The, again, this day, which is the fourth Tuesday, or the third Thursday. You don't have to remember that, that's in your email. If you would give us your sense of what meeting date for you would work best, we'd like to move from this particular meeting date, if at all possible, because there's another regional group that we're going to talk to you about a little bit later, this meeting on the same evening. And some of the folks that, Rodney Beal, for instance, and several other folks are on both meeting, in both meetings. So just let us know how that goes. You'll have to excuse me, I've been talking for like three hours straight. Next on the agenda, I'm just, I'm going to ask Christina, since this is something that she was, her brainchild and something that she's worked very hard to bring to fruition. Vaya has adopted a new regional model and made some related changes in our organizational structure based on that. I think you're going to be very excited about how that impacts you as local government and having someone in your community to really work with you on strategic initiatives and really moving the community forward around behavioral health issues.
I'm going to stand up and say something.
Yeah, why don't you come up here?
I'm going to come up here when I have these books, because I like to, I always appreciate when I can see people.
That's right.
So, good evening again. I know most of you, but for those of you who I don't know, I'm very, very excited. Brian Ingram sends his regrets this evening. This is a little bit what Shelley was just talking about. There is, and we're going to, it's on our agenda tonight to talk about the Western North Carolina Substance Abuse Alliance. As you all well know, there is a huge opioid substance use epidemic, not only nationally, but truly in western North Carolina that I'm sure all of you men and women are facing in your local communities, as we, as well as your mental health, substance use, and IDB authority is facing in trying to be a partner with you on that. Many great leaders came together across western North Carolina. Many of you could be your hospital representatives and a variety of other great leaders. They are actually meeting simultaneously over in our building, in our administrative offices over on the other side of Ashville tonight. And that was sort of another big kickoff for what we are doing with, again, within western North Carolina that you'll hear a little bit more about. So Brian had to make a tough choice, but he has to make the best choices he can. Let many of you deal with it, even like Billy, who had to be somewhere else, who's normally our chair. So he sends his regrets, but he has very big interest of being here and being part of that. So, hey, I just wanted to share that with you, so thank you. This regional model, so, you know, a lot of systems, if you've been, many of you have a long history with what used to be Smokey, now is Vaya. And when I came to Vaya, or Smokey then, seven years ago, there was a regional model in place. One of the, couple of the signatures that Vaya has, holds very, very dear, and our board of directors, and Ira is one of our board of directors, holds very, very dear, is that we keep and we maintain a local presence in your communities, in each of the 23 counties. And we have been very, very dedicated. We have close to 500 staff across 23 counties that do a variety of things, behind the scenes for the business and in front of the scenes. Our board has been very supportive and wanting to continue to do that. Many of you know that we became a managed care organization in July 1st, 2012, and we really learned how to do that business. We started out with a very, very strong commitment of lots of staff participating in many of your local community meetings, collaboratives, all kinds of initiatives, everything from EDs to child collaboratives about mental health and many, many other things. As we've learned how to do our business, we've also listened from some of you and definitely from our board of directors. What we've heard very, very clearly from the counties at large is that you wanted a person, a name, a number, and an email to call when you had a problem. And we have, and I'll be honest with you, we kind of struggled because we see out in each of your communities, there are people sitting out there, living and working and doing all kinds of great things, hopefully that you think are good, every day in your communities. But the, one of the things we heard from many county managers and county commissioners was they really were looking for someone not only to call, but also to have someone who would really sit at the county level, at the leadership level that you men and women share in your communities, to really look at what is going on from development to what are the real critical needs, what is Vaya's role in that? And really asking us to say, we need you out here, and we need you in our local individual communities and counties helping us. So we really took heart to that. It was a consistent message, and I would hope tonight that what I'm talking about, that you're going to see is that we've responded. So we have had, over the last couple of years, a tremendous amount of local staff, which we will continue to have, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But what we really looked at is what are our staff doing out there? How beneficial is it really to you? Are they accountable enough? Are they the right staff? Are they a real county leader? Are they really the type of person you would want to have come and sit in a room with you in your community and really be the mental health authority representative, which we are for each of your communities across the 23 counties? So after a lot of conversations and a lot of due diligence, because this really means a pretty structural change for our organization, is we just, we deemed Brian and our executive leadership team, we talked about this, some of the board, agreed to move to a regional model. And by that means, really, that you have, as Shelley was saying, and people were in this, on the piece of paper, you have, you have a map, and on this piece of paper that lists people's names, you have Shelley, you have Brian, and you have Sarah Sotella. So what we really, you're going to learn lots of things tonight, but what we really want you to know is that these are all, these are senior staff that report directly to me, as some of the other staff do, that have a very senior priority and leadership role in the Vaya organization, who is your peer, my, your peer, your counterpart, your leadership, your county leader. We're trying to give you the best person we have, who needs to come and have a relationship with you and anybody else in your county. Most of these people, I absolutely know, a variety of your leaders in the community. And there's two other people that, and I don't want to confuse you. So you have these three people who we really want for you to begin to have a real relationship with. Some of you, if you know Shelley, Shelley is just one of the big foundational pieces of the seven western counties and of our organization. Brian Shubing has been with us for twice in time. He's been more east of here in his career, but done many, many things. Sarah is somewhat new to Vaya, but yet, because of the great amount of experience that has been in our system for a while. So these three people we're offering, you have a great deal of experience and knowledge and wisdom of the system. There's two people that I have to talk about that are a little different than these three people. Donald Ruz, who is here tonight, our senior director of provider network, who is managing all the 700-plus contracts of providers, managing a huge department that is keeping our contracts with providers to provide services to the people in your local communities, has also been a huge leader. And I know many of you have known Donald. Donald comes from the western island system, and in these eight central region counties, many of you know him. We, we don't want to take away Donald's role in the relationships and the pieces his he has, but Sarah, these three people are a good counterpart for him. Many of you know a wonderful lady by the name of Rhonda Cox, who's been around for a very long time, senior director of care coordination. Her department's now up to about 165 staff. These are the men and women who are locally sitting in every one of your communities, in one of our offices, at DSS, at a health department, at a provider agency, or working out of their home. So even though we have went to a more of a regional model from a leadership systemic strategic advantage, hopefully to you and to us, so we can be better partners with you and the community, I want each of you to know, and we did this with our board the other night, we went through the counties and just talked about, you still have buildings, you still have people. Our board has asked us to keep a local presence, and we did. So please know that our staff are the citizens of your community who live and work there every single day, and are working with other consumers and families, but our providers, they may be monitoring services, they may be dealing with the ED and the hospitals, they could be doing a variety of things. And they're more bits on the ground, that particular staff, or that staff that were there, that were working. So we hope that you will see, I hope, if you don't have a relationship with these people, their goal, my goal, my pressure on them is to begin to have a relationship so you know their name, their number, they're a great person, they're a great contact. And what we really hope at Vaya is that you will see them as we see them, as strong, dynamic leaders who really understand the system, who would really be an asset to you when it comes to the probably, the disability challenges you're having in your system. And I know as many county commissioners and managers that I've talked to across the 23 counties, you, you know, we're all struggling together. We're all talking about the same people, the same families, the same needs. The world is very small at the end of the day, for I think one of our purposes, it's very attentional. Any questions about some of that? You have their names, numbers, they're here tonight. If you don't know them, they'll be coming to see you. Any questions or comments?
Great plan.
Great plan, thank you.
I appreciate, I didn't realize when I met Sarah, because she just said she was the new Shelley, so I was afraid I wouldn't say it.
But Kelly Page.
It does help me a lot to see it all laid out, so I think it's a nice setup, and I'm very grateful for it, so thank you.
Well, and we're going to learn with you.
Yeah.
We're going to learn with you, with these individual folks, and they're very honest. And the great thing that I think, that I have the pleasure of, that I hope to run into me, so things that are going on in your communities, I meet with these folks, talk to them a lot. We're really trying to figure out how I'm going to stay updated on communities and counties at the level they're working with you, as well as Brian, or executive leadership team, and even all the way up to our board or something. So we're excited about that.
Christina was talking before the meeting. You know, we in the age now, everything is a text or email. We've got to rely from face to face, which is to me the biggest. And we appreciate what you're doing, and Shelley, visiting, ex-captain. You really helped Haywood, don't you think, Ira, in educating my board on what Vaya does in Haywood County? Now, face to face is the biggest.
It's priceless.
Right.
It is, it is. And we really do have a great desire for a great relationship. So if you will open your door, we would love to step into it and be part of your community. And we've always been there, and I'm sensitive that this may sound, this is really new. I think it's more strategic in what we're doing. And again, I hope for some of you have requested this, that you see that we have listened and have responded, so thank you. The next part of the agenda, I'm just going to keep kind of going down. It's probably a little bit, I'm a little bit more passionate, a little bit more direct, and really try to speak with you honestly. And I hope this next couple of agenda items will really be a dialogue around a lot of us. We are all, so this is really kind of some updates legislatively in general assembly. You men, you gentlemen and women know a lot about what's going on. It is kicking up down in Raleigh. I spent six years in my last, 32 years of my state career in general assembly every day, so know a lot about that world. And, you know, they really try, they try to do the best they can with the information they have. So, so we know, we didn't come tonight with a specific handout of what is our legislative agenda, you know, what we're hearing among the other MCOs at this point in time. But what I feel like, when I spoke to Brian, I spoke to him numerous times about, you know, if he was here tonight, what he would be talking to you about. And I think the very first bullet on their single string funding and the fund balance. So I'm just going to be very honest. So in the last year, you probably, if you've been with us, hanging out with us, you know that there was over $20 million cut out of our, of our funding resources. We were asked to take our savings, which is called fund balance, and backfill that amount that was cut. The noise in the system and the legislation, legislators in general assembly is that they are still looking at possibly another cut for us, you know. There's a lot of noise about that, and we take that very, very, very seriously. For you who don't know, in regard to our fund balance, our savings, however you want to categorize that pot of money, it is one time money. It is money that as a managed care organization, we have been able to save and then to, and many of you have seen over the last couple of months in the fall, what we call our reinvestment plan, taking that savings and reinvesting it back in the community. The hardest piece, the hardest piece to understand about when you, politically, in your communities, whatever your role is with your own North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, your general assembly, your legislative representatives, is that money is one time, that's it. So many families, and we see the need greatly at Vaya, how many people need services? What the services are? We know, we really know a tremendous amount of how much more we could do for so many citizens in your local communities, that your sheriffs, your police departments, your DSS, your health departments, if everybody's dealing with. Our problem isn't that money, is that could I go and set up, and Donald could issue, you know, 200 more contracts across 23 counties, and we could provide services to more people? And then comes June 30th, it dead stops. It comes to a screeching halt. We have seen some of our partners do those types of actions. And now the message to those same communities is, this is going to end if we don't obtain any funding, or if there's more cuts, we don't know how we're going to do that. Vaya, with our board of directors, decided not to do that. The strategic things we've invested in are programs that we could put money in for one time, and something can be built and sustained in a variety of different ways. But when it comes to services of people, that money, and this is my 40th year in this public system, I am a, as you, a true servant of this state and the public system, and my heart and all of yours, as I'm sure, is always focused on the most needed, the most disabled, the most chronically ill, and the most challenged. And we are really at a state, as you all know, we did not do Medicaid expansion. We've all seen the impacts of that, that's just a fact. And I really tried to share to you tonight comments that are not necessarily judgmental, but I think that when I think about you, and probably what you were dealing with every day, and what we are seeing every day, there is really a request here, and I don't know if it's a request, us staying together and partners, us having the same legislative agenda, us when, you know, whoever comes to you politically, whatever you have, you can influence, you can talk to, you can ask for. We would love to ask on behalf of Vaya that you really advocate for there to be no more additional cuts to this particular system in regard to care for people. We have yet seen, even though it is horrific what we are seeing with the opioid epidemic and the other severe substance abuse crisis we're having in the system, we are just now beginning to see that. I was at a conference recently where, as many of you know, many of the people who are in opioids, we have a whole initiative going on about pregnant women with addiction, and what happens to those babies. So those babies get born, they're addicted, you can probably hear this from your hospitals in your community. And what they're doing now, they're projecting out, that that is the next set of children who are going to have intellectual and developmental disabilities, and are going to be probably more expensive than any other group of children over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years that we have seen to date. And when I, you know, you listen to these phenomenal people that do, this is about North Carolina, this isn't even a national person talking. This is talking about what people know and what they're seeing in the hospital today of children, before they ever get, what the cost is going to be, before they ever get to kindergarten, before they ever get to preschool, less when they get to school, what the demands are going to be on the public system, and our system in your communities, and especially all what many of you are funding the SSS and other departments on the services. So I say all that, I hope I'm just validating what you already know. But I think this is really a time, as we have always stood together, Vaya's always been very proud of the relationship with you as citizens representing your communities, that we must come together today. And what we really want to do in the days and the weeks to come, as the general assembly, you're doing your work legislatively around your own communities as a representative of North Carolina, that we, that when it comes to this particular piece of the mental health, substance use, and intellectual development disability, that we work, walk in partnership with you. If you need information from us, if you need data from us, if you really feel like, you know, well, that sounds good, but what am I really getting for my money in this particular county? We want to answer those questions for you. We want you to know whatever you need to know about us, so that there are questions of how much you can rely on our support in helping you as counties, and the counties can help us in our support. You know, all you have to do, you can think whatever you want to do about national news and all the new things that's happening in government, and all our new things, and all our new people. But when it gets down to these particular counties of western North Carolina, we must stick together as one voice. One of the, when I said why Brian couldn't be here tonight, the group of people that are meeting with Brian from many of your communities across 23 counties, they are trying to develop a one-page piece of paper so that everybody says the same thing about the substance abuse epidemic in western North Carolina. So every hospital CEO, any of you, Brian Ingram's of the world, whoever is trying to influence the general assembly, that they are trying to create one agenda about this unbelievable epidemic that is horrific for us, and all of us are paying for it. And the sad thing is, this is probably, of the three disabilities, is the one that has the least amount of money. You must always, always remember, this is not fully funded. It has never been fully funded. And now we have this horrific problem.
Very interestingly, we held a meeting yesterday with our state rep and our state senator. We had a round table in our county with two commissioners, two city councilmen, two school board, just trying to establish that good relationship. And interestingly enough, when I brought up the whole mental health issue and the things that are concerning for us in Transylvania County, the state senator said, you know, when you talk, when you say mental health, don't you just mean drug abuse? And I said, no, sir, I don't. You know, I'm talking about the full gamut. And he wanted me to give him a percentage of what is substance abuse, what percentage of that is within the mental health concerns right now. And I said, and it doesn't, I, you know, I can't give you anything, I don't know, but I'll certainly find out. So I, I think we've got a huge education piece that we need to be doing. I mean, he was, he was just stunned as I started talking about, you know, explaining the kiosk and the statistical screenings and how it worked, and then like what we were looking at, and, you know, talking about permanent schizophrenics, and the telepsych, and the ED occupation. I mean, they were totally clueless about the issues that we're dealing with on the ground. And just kind of, I mean, why, finally, the state rep said, ooh, you need to send me a bunch of information on this. You know, and since I've been the left-wing secret agent, because I'm talking about social issues, he was really stunned to learn all of that.
Right.
So, so there's a huge opportunity here, Christina, for all of us, and to get more of those facts. Because we're going to be doing this every six weeks in Transylvania with our state rep and state senator, and I can't encourage you all enough to try to put something like that together, because they really, no, no.
Yeah, it's, and Kelly Page, it's humbling to have those kind of conversations. It's humbling to still hear that, you know. I keep telling myself, it's 2017, but there's so much rhetoric in the system, and there's so much noise, and there's whatever people think about news. We actually want to, you know, provide, hear anybody.
Oh my gosh, you're not going to talk about facts, are you? Come on, Lee. And let's not do it, they can't see the first thing.
I'm trying to control myself. But I'm thinking about Donald, if you, in a little bit later in the agenda, we're going to talk about the, the gaps analysis about services and things like that. One of the pieces of that is the penetration rate. Every one of your counties nationally, has a national standard of how many people are projected based on the population would have these disabilities. And so that is very factual, it's very nationally known, and that is very, it's just a very solid piece of information. And then, and then we can tell you how well we're doing in getting that penetration rate, to be really honest, and why we're not getting it if we're going. You know, it's about money, it's about a lot of things. But I would just, you know, I think in regard, if you have a piece of paper in your packet that looks at the bar graph, it's a one-page piece of paper, and at the top it says, members needing care, proceeding here, and funding here. And I think Brian Ingram, I can't even, I think he must have his tattoos somewhere, because he talks, he talks a little bit. But, and every year, really, or every six months or so, he asks us, this is a picture. If you look at the Medicaid side of the piece of paper, you see, you know, you see this great big number, this great big line all the way up here, you see the number of people, you see how much money is spent, and you see, as it goes down. The uninsured and underinsured, look at the difference there. We've been able, you know, and I will say that in every month in our, in our reports to the state, Vaya, we are very proud, and it's still not enough, we are very proud that the way we have leveraged the model of spending our state dollars, that this is what is always at jeopardy, we are purchasing more service and providing more service based on these dollars than any other MCO at the present time. And that has been a consistent record for us. And this is something that our board, and Brian, and the leadership of Vaya has been very, very committed to, and Donald has helped tremendously. But it still isn't right when you look at the, the cost and the number of people. I mean, there's just a picture here, right?
Well, but can this be sent to us electronically to send on to our state reps and state senators, please?
Absolutely, we can do this. We can, and I don't know what the plan is for any, any of all this, but you should, absolutely. I mean, we actually, I even use a carrier in my, I just have a stack of various pieces of paper that is kind of my topic, it goes everywhere I go. I think this just paints a picture. We made decisions wrong or right about Medicaid expansion. This is the final. And I would say this probably gives a little bit more credit than I think is really true in probably some of your communities and what it looks like. So, very, very, very important. Let me just stop there and see what, if other folks have comments about sort of this, not, not just because it's the political agenda for all of us, but really staying focused on the partnership and what you were seeing in your communities, of the needs of people that we have some responsibility with you to serve. And I don't know, what do you all think about this conversation? We're very, very, very concerned.
Well, I know I'm hearing appeals from parents of adult, adult patients that are cycling in and out of care facilities and being so challenging when they're home with families feeling like they have no resources. I think, I mean, I mean, I know I called you on two specifically, looking for assistance for them. It's very, very challenging with that inability to get a long-term plan set up for that adult child because they haven't enough control over that adult child.
Very, very hard, very, very difficult. Others, quickly see your community in regard to mental health, substance use, intellectual development disabilities, and issues that you're facing, concerns?
When I think about it for Polk County, I think about, we have dogs that are one of the best school systems in the state, but then our graduation rate isn't that good. It doesn't reflect that. And I can't help but feel like you give you a certain point for some of these kids, and, you know, they get on some sort of substance, and that really has a huge effect on the graduation rate.
Absolutely.
And I think, I'm sure other counties have the same problem. You've built, the teachers have built their part, the administrators have built their part. But at some point, you know, it's something in the personal life that takes over. And it's usually around, some of them have six months to go and drop out. They have made As and Bs all the way until the last six months, and then don't finish out. And no one knows why, so.
Somebody somewhere probably knows why, but is not able to know as soon as I try, or to prevent it, or to deal with it. It's, it's so challenging. I mean, we all have heard of that, I mean, it kind of takes a village. It's going to take every single one of us to keep the amount of money we have in the system today, as well as to continue to provide more services for people. You know, sometimes I wonder, like, maybe if you might, you know, I just have a long history, like, maybe some of you do, with some of this particular population. But, you know, people say, do you think, do you think people's issues are more complicated? I could go yes or no. I think we just know so much more. I think there's so much more at stake. The thing that's sad to me, for me in my career, is the stigma is still to be broken in this. career, is the stigma is still too big of a business. You know, I was just having a conversation with somebody the other day, you know, just how they still thought about going to therapy, and just, you know, what a big deal that was, and what an obstacle, they don't want to go to that building because somebody was in my car parked in the parking lot. And why do they have the sign? They need to have a different sign, and then people won't know where people go to therapy. And, you know, I listen to that, and my heart goes out to those people, because it is a huge barrier still today. But yeah, you know, in North Carolina, they say one in every three people, the new statistics from doing, one in every three people either have someone who's intimately close to them or knows somebody who has one of these three disabilities. One in every three people. So just think about people in this room, the likelihood you know someone, so he has affected someone in your family, a best friend, or just you have some relationship with is that high today. So, and it is not going away. We want it to, but right now, it's, it's really peaking. Um, we're better at many things than finding out things about people from assessments and all of the diagnostics that we do, but I, I think the point here, and I'll move on, is that we really, we'd really like to walk down this path of whatever the General Assembly does this year in partnership with you. And asking you each to call us, tell us what you need, you have three people, you have Donald, you have me, you have, you have people who are right there waiting to help you, so that you can educate your, uh, political partners and try to have the right influence, that we keep the funding in the system for your citizens, because I know you know they need it.
I, I still say, this education, I would say it's a lot of people in the legislature that feels that a person really fights it hard, they work through mental illness, you know, that's the old kind of thought. So, to me, if you take it seriously, you don't fund it. If you're not funding it, then for me, that's not one of your problems, but I, I think that's, we fighting the past still, that a person's strong enough, I heard growing up, you fight through it, get over it, get over it.
Politically, they just have-
Just like we did, you know, in athletics or football, you know, and there are days you have an injury, the coach says, you know, just shake it off. But now, but now, that's changed, so, same thing with, uh, uh, substance abuse. Uh, I, I was thinking, in our county, we, we had someone to come for us, the commissioner, how many, uh, painkillers are prescribed for you in Haven? And it was some, some-
High nineties.
How?
Number was in the high nineties, I don't remember exactly the number. It was in the high nineties, and in Macon, it's up over 200, for man, woman, and child in Macon, in our county, it was up in the high nineties.
Ninety?
So we're 200 in Cherokee County.
So we're 200 in Cherokee, and that's for every man, woman, and child, and they-
So, so we're talking about, one or two tablets here, that was 102, it hooked.
Yeah, this, I agree, this meeting parallel to us tonight, the last time they there, Donald and many, many vets were in the room with us, they were showing the millions and millions of pills that were prescribed in these 23 counties. I mean, it's humbling, and we have doctors in this room, we have many, many, very influential people who really want to know how to treat people correctly, but e- even for myself, it was just unbelievable, it's like millions and millions of prescriptions.
We have, we have a lot of complaints from people in Cherokee County that, that can't get in the voids to ask for drugs. So that's, that's economic, like, that's-
Absolutely. I can say that.
I was going to say, on that study, I was, I was actually shocked, because I've been in the field a long time, if the, uh, if MS were actually one of the highest providers of those same, uh, chances, and, 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 and stuff like that, and they're just, you know, there are tried practices that are giving 68 or 60 pills, and you only need like three or four days, and you're like, you're dying.
It is, and, and the cost of the pills at the end of the day are pretty cheap, and they, you know, they're starting to make their money, they go out and sell them on the streets.
Well, I just want to say, for those of you that were in orientation, we talked about this, but I just want to remind you, um, when we talked about the state funding reductions and the desire to make sure that they don't happen again this year, a lot of that is related to how we serve people with substance abuse issues. You know, we talked about those people in Medicaid, Medicaid is an entitlement program, if you need medical necessity, that you get services for many, many, many of the people we serve who have addiction issues. They don't qualify for Medicaid, they're not being qualified, there's some exceptions around pregnancy perhaps, but, so, we have this growing demand, right, and the funding continues to diminish, and I think you guys would say that many types of treatment isn't short course treatment, I mean, that a treatment that goes on for a period of time and then makes sense, so.
We actually have about a 70, 30% split, um, on the substance abuse side, that 70% of individuals seeking treatment are uninsured individuals. So that 70% is going after this really small pot of money, and only 30% of those individuals actually have Medicaid. So, the problems continue to go up, it's, it's, it's keen against our smallest pot of money for us to address those problems. And that's the same pot of money that for certain people with intellectual, um, disabilities, well, adults, um, that aren't insured as well, so we're, we're really, we're really passing out a lot of Band-Aids on that side, we really need to do some significant surgery.
30% probably have mental health problems, it's probably a lot of them, but, but.
Yeah, just one piece, I think, we, substance abuse is just the world of what it is today, but I always want to highlight that, and, and we are very disappointed in this, that VIA, for the people with intellectual disability, we are required by, uh, by the state to keep a waitlist. We have 1,263 people on that waitlist today. We have just, and I've said this in a couple of meetings, over the last couple of months, we have finally placed people who needed service who went on the list in 2006. Now, there is a point in context, you think about those, like one woman said, my daughter's now an adult, Christine. And so, uh, you know, we look at this population, and I don't want to lose sight of that population either, because there is a list, I was in Sylvia yesterday, I met with the lady who manages that list, and sit in her office and just, just trying to get just my head wrapped around, and it is growing constantly, every single day. So, they, think about those families, that may be children, adolescents, or adults on that list, but there is no good excuse for VIA, the system, or anyone in North Carolina to have that, those people sitting on a list for that length of time, needing that level of care. Now, we are, we are, so many of the people on the waitlist, to be fair, are receiving some very minimal services, something called personal care, or respite, or a service called Community Guide. So they're getting minimal things, but the care that they really need, and the services they really need to really help them become citizens and be fuller, and many of them have bright potential. Will they be able to meet that potential unless something can change around funding for them? And I, and, we own that list at VIA, but we own it with everyone who's involved in these people's lives. These are, these are people from all of your communities who are waiting, and they have every right to be as upset as they typically are when I speak with them. So I just want to highlight, it's one thing to know, and it's one thing to sit in somebody's office and see the list of people. So 2006, so now we're working on 2007, and, uh, and so you've got 1,263 people, and we just got another 27 slots, I'm sorry to say that, I don't like the word slots, but funding for 27 more people. Now, probably by, in three or four months, we'll have 27 more people on that list, so you're never going to catch up. And I know that Brian shared with me that there, um, you know, we have very strong IDD advocates in this region and across the state of those families and people, so I hope, I don't, I, I think it's just a very concrete example of where we are in the system today. It, it's really horrific for those, for those families, so.
Well, and aren't we, I mean, and then it piggybacks on your conversation earlier about babies, that we're drug addicted, so we're actually going to see an exponential increase of those needing those services.
We will. I mean, the projections, when I worked in state government, you know, if this, like this is 2017, we were looking at 20, 2020, 25, 2030, you know, looking at the statistics of prevalence of what was going to happen to people with disabilities. So I've always had an interest in that, and when I was with those individuals a week or two ago, it, it's just, it's so factual, because you see the babies today, and I'm sure all of you hear horrific stories in your own EDs about what's going on, and, uh, so, but, uh, one of the things on here is more of a question about the report from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Brian, I think we wanted to know, some of you are actually part of this forum, and are any of you are any part of conversations where mental health, substance abuse, IDD is being talked about? We just kind of wanted to ask about that, I, we're not, I, I'm not sure who is actually part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors, and your legislative platforms, or things you might be talking about that we could help with or support.
Larry Chapman, the Chair of Transylvania County Commission, is the District 16 Representative for the NCACC, he's on the Board of Directors, and is a voting member for Legislative Policy. In the past, I've been on the HHS Committee, but the new Chair of that has not ever asked about scheduling meetings, so I have not had the opportunity to express myself to him yet, um, but I'll work on that one.
Okay.
The, and the regional, the regional NCACC meeting, and Shelley, didn't you do that? You came to Waynesville last year.
And, and I actually have that on everybody's tablet.
Yeah, because we're, we're hosting in Transylvania this year, it's April 6th in Transylvania County this year.
That's great.
So, um, they'll be there, the NCACC will be there. But I'm, I mean, I'm happy to put you in touch with any Stafford NCACC.
And, you know, I spoke with, uh, I've been working with Jason King, we've been working with him on planning for something we're going to be talking about in a moment, and I talked to Patrice Lassler earlier today. Um, one of the things we're going to be doing at the district meetings for all of you, I mean, I think most of us are in Transylvania, some of Brian's counties may go to the, the next region over, but Patrice mentioned that she was going to be, uh, having a discussion with the commissioners around the heroin slash opioid epidemic, and my question was, okay, so you're going to talk about what, you know, do you need some information from us, do you need some context, what, how can we support that conversation? So if you would encourage, you know, any kind of help and support we can give people we have to do.
Absolutely. So the next thing on the agenda is the county commissioner training and the, uh, your association leadership forum. So, so Brian and the other, uh, CEOs of the MCA's, there's seven, seem to be only six in North Carolina, like VIA, attended a meeting in Raleigh a little while back, and our association, the North Carolina Council of Community Programs, so Brian and that association met with your association, and there was a conversation about, um, I guess the need, and I want to be very respectful, that many county commissioners and many of the boards, because you have so many things you're having to deal with, that you may or may not really, many of, many of your colleagues, uh, do not understand who VIA is, or who the MCA's are. What are we really doing, what's our really business, what's our purpose, what's our money, how are we investing, and what do services look like? So my understanding, uh, when Brian attended this meeting with his peers, and your, and Patrice and other people, and then our association, there was a very big interest of maybe rolling out a training, and that maybe, you know, different people would do that. I think according to Brian, there was a decision made by the CEOs that we as, we as, like VIA in these 23 counties, we would take on that training, and that we would provide that with you. So what I'm coming tonight to say is, really, the request from Brian and from that meeting is, is that this county commissioner advisory board be the, the sponsor, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll provide the work and the legwork, but that you help us provide a meaningful training. You know your other county commissioners, you know people in your county who maybe could really benefit, and maybe have an interest, who really need to understand some of the things you're learning about, about us, and how we might do that with you. Shelley and I talked yesterday, you know, getting people to come, and, and we, we really need to do this where this is feasible. When I spoke to Brian today, he's, you know, he really wants to make it worthwhile for people. There's been a couple of other PowerPoints, some of the other MCA's are a little bit ahead of us, they've done some work in trying to work with their county commissioners. So I'm coming tonight to really ask you, I don't know if you've heard about this, but this was a request from your association to our association, and the decision was, is that each MCO in their counties would put boots on the ground with you, and that we would try to, uh, really help you and others get educated around who we are. So I'm going to stop there for a moment. So I don't know if anybody's heard about that, but that was a real commitment. According to Brian, our goal is that we are to do this by June 1st, uh, or as convenient as is. And Shelley, because she has so much history with many of you in this organization, the County Commissioner Association for North Carolina, we're really trying, we need to brainstorm for just a few minutes about what's the best way, what do you think about that? Do you find your other, uh, county, your colleagues would be very interested in coming to something, if it was meaningful and really helping, they'd get educated about us? So, uh, we're trying to fulfill the requests from your association, so.
I thought that's what you all were doing when, I mean, with, with our quarterly meetings. I mean, that's, to me, you've already, I mean, we've experienced that in Transylvania, and I don't know if it's just because I'm the loudmouth that I am, um, but, I mean, we've certainly, I, I feel like we're there with VIA. I mean, we've got, you know, VIA's showing up, I mean, we've got Early Childhood Initiative, we've got Domestic Violence Initiative, and we've got, what else are we doing? Sounds like there's something else. Oh, the Homeless Teens, Homeless School Students Initiative, and we've got, and VIA's at every single one of those meetings. So, I mean, y'all are there, we're, we're, we're working with you.
Thank you. Others thoughts?
Shelley, leading with these, the way that leading with these campaigns is what the difference, I know how it happened now, completely changed our vote. At one time, I was in, and now I see five people, some support, five, five.
And I appreciate that, thank you so much. And part of, I mean, I, part of the reason we tried to do this regional model is we saw the value in it, and honestly, one person can't do everything, and worked with the community partners, so thank you. Just as FYI, I'm trying to put it in context, you know, every two years, the association does its leadership, I think it's called the Leadership Forum, uh, training where, especially for new commissioners coming on board, I think in April, they are going to have, um, a special session around Health and Human Services that they'll be invited before. I think we're going to help support that initiative at the MayHAC, and it is for what does the SSS do, what does the Health Department, what does the MCO do. And my understanding from Patrice is that because the MCO laws have become complicated, medically performed, that there is a real need to sort of take some time and focus specifically on the MCO, and that's why they wanted to do the additional training. Um, so, you know, is there a way that, and it, because it's more than just sort of like the strategic initiatives, it's really thinking the big picture, what's going to be happening in the state, where we are in the process, and it could be something, you know, just some regional trainings where we bring folks together.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, if you divided us up within our regions, looking at maybe pulling three counties together, or even four counties, sort of in a central location, um, I think that would probably be pretty feasible. I think the big question for us, and, and I had my quarterly meeting with Mission today, you know, the big question for us is, what's the big gorilla in the room going to be doing in this Medicaid model?
Absolutely.
And what's your relationship with them, and how are you all working together? Because if, you know, it's, it's just such a shifting landscape right now, it's really hard for us, you know, as elected officials, to get our head around the conversation.
That's great. So I'm going to say, if anything's a little bit, you may know what I'm talking about now, so, a couple, I guess, two years now, this very famous House Bill 381 that got written, and has a whole legislative set of milestones to give a vision to the system about what's going to happen in this public system that I love, and hopefully you have some appreciation for. So there's this thing talked about, about the 1115 waiver, and we manage a waiver today, how that's going to change, bringing all the work we do in the disability world together with the healthcare world, we really talk about integrated collaborative care, so we're treating the whole person. So I know, I spend a great deal of time talking to hospital people, primary care physicians, MayHAC, you know, Duke, whoever it is that's running the primary care offices, and getting them to understand who our population is, are you treating them what we take to treat? So you have a whole new waiver coming that the state of North Carolina is very interested in acquiring, we have to spend a lot of time with the Centers of Medicaid and Medicare to get that approved. At some point in time, right now, the projections are, and they're just projections, somewhere around, you know, late 2017, early 2018, there's going to be this historical RFA that the state of North Carolina Department of Human Services is going to issue to the world, and people are going to apply, and when I say people, that is, we will see what the requirements will be, if a lot of that will be the commercials, that's the Blue Cross of Shields, the Optums, the Centeens, you know, the United Healthcare, and any other large commercial, they're already spending a great deal of time here, that's no new news, they've been here for a long time. North Carolina is one of the pioneer states that have left, that we, you know, for VIA and the other six MCA's like VIA, we are quasi-system in North Carolina. I travel a lot across the country, do a lot of things, learn how to do things better. We are very, very unique that managed care for these three disabilities is in the public system. Majority of this across the country has already gone to the commercial insurance companies, and they subcontract with people like VIA, because we are, we have special, we're specialty populations, and that's what we represent, and that's what we did well, and that's our provider network. So I, I think the, the point I'm trying to make is just to say, if any of that makes sense to you, you're ahead of the gap. sense to you, you're ahead of the gap. If you really couldn't follow much of that conversation, knowing what's coming, and knowing that it is going to have a big impact, it's not just about who we are, but yes, we're very concerned about Vaya, with our board and their dedication to us, and our employees, and the contracts, and the providers, and how all that, all of this is about the people who need care and service. We feel like counties, and we would hope you would feel the same, should have a great interest of understanding what healthcare is going to look like in this new package that the state is going to. And we are like in North Carolina most, I just saw a big thing about what Virginia just, just awarded huge grants, and they've just put all three disabilities into that commercial world over the next couple of years, and what they've just awarded as of last Friday. So it's all around us, going around these states. I don't think this venture is, this is awful and bad, that is not. We have a great opportunity to influence it, you have an opportunity to influence what healthcare will look for any of us, just as citizens in any community, as well as the people we recognize. So I think part of this training is to really give you the basic understanding, it's not just about you understanding our world, it's our, this is our world in these people. This is your hospitals, your primary care docs, your specialty docs, you know, the SSS or Health Department, who's ever treating someone, it is all in it in this package. And it's very hard to keep up with because it's moving very, very fast. And yes, there's a huge political agenda. What we're interested in, in this conversation, this training, or whatever we decide with you to do, is that we help you and your other commissioners, and I have a feeling there's some things you really probably should be talking to us about, about what your healthcare system looks like. I mean, we're very involved in all these hospitals across 23 counties, and all what we do with them, talk to them about, and who's buying up primary care practice, and who's managing the primary care practices, and what's the ED looking like, and who are the docs going into the ED? I mean, this is major work. So to me, the conversation is very, we want it to be valuable for you and other commissioners, your colleagues, to come and spend a couple of hours and really get something out of this. So I, I think it's a two-way conversation to me. So, I mean, so Shelly had suggested last night when I was speaking with her, that I guess the meetings around COG, and some of the district meetings, and things like that, that maybe it's good to attach to that where maybe more people come, and you already have an audience. I see some people shaking their hand. Would that make sense, to attach it to where you already gather, and since you could add something to it? I don't know, I don't know enough about your schedules.
We already have the COG scheduled, as we said, 27, that's lovely. We have very good attendance on our seventh campus. It's a great opportunity to have this possibility.
That'd be great, we'd love to do that. So, so just to kind of keep the...
Form an outreach and...
Yeah, kind of view of what we need, that, how long, but we could certainly not introduce it and see if Sarah would like to host it.
I don't know if there's any other comments, I'm very sensitive of time, I probably take no more time than I was supposed to, but I wanted to just, well, we're going to, I'm going to have these folks, we're going to reach out, we're going to connect with Patrice, the COG representatives, I mean, just the right people, and see if you're okay for us to move forward. But really, what Vaya would like to do is the materials to say that this group is sponsoring this conversation, and by that, that you're supporting this conversation in your communities with your other fellow commissioners and county managers. So are we in agreement with that? Would everybody okay with that? Good? Okay. Go ahead. Donald, do you want to talk for a little bit? I was supposed to talk about substance abuse, but you'd like to talk.
You're getting a break now.
We drifted, we thought it...
We did, but we have lots of handouts, okay? I'll let you talk for a moment.
Okay, I'll leave up here.
Okay. Play your ready chairs here.
Touch on a few things, as Christina said, there's a whole other group that's meeting in a big room over at our, our building right now, to really discuss these important issues that we're all dealing with. We pulled together a group of influential people from all parts of the system to develop a substance abuse steering committee, which is the group that's meeting tonight, to really look at the data that's coming through our system to try to figure out what is going to be our objectives, where are we going to stick our money, what resources can we apply to that? You've seen there, we don't have a lot of money to apply to that, so it's really important that we don't take a really a fragmented approach, and do the shotgun approach, and just try to do everything we can. So we really are asking these groups to help us laser focus, where can we have the greatest impact in our communities and in those groups? So we form, so that steering committee is going to have four subcommittees that are going to be reporting information about it, and those are really important pieces of this puzzle. Right now, and, and these are in your packet as well, we have a, a group that's talking about Medicaid assisted treatment in the substance abuse world. For most, that's, that's a discussion that hasn't been happening in a long time. We have medications that can assist people, like ibuprofen, methadone, and some other drugs out there that can help people get off of their illegal drug and get a life back, get their house, and get a job, integrate back into society, and then kind of lean back off of those, off of those drugs. That's one way to assist people. It's not well-accepted, though. Even in our own provider community, we're fighting with our providers that says, hey, if you're on that drug, we don't want you in our substance abuse treatment group, because that's still a drug. And they're not seeing the new information coming through our system is, no, that drug's just like you taking your diabetes medication, so you can, you know, continue to go to work and have a life with your diabetes. That medication helps you do the same thing, or medication can control your thyroid, because your thyroid is even higher to go. So that is one way, so we're really, that group is looking at, how do we re-educate not only our treatment system, our primary care docs, on how can you support that? Because a lot of that work can happen in primary care settings, not necessarily in treatment settings. And there's a lot more people out there in those primary care settings than there are, we have the substance abuse provider organizations, where people will show up to their doctor that don't want to park their car out in front of the substance abuse provider agency, right? So that's one really important group that's right now talking about, what can we do around educating those people? How can we get more docs prescribing those types of medication? As well as, how can we work with the docs that are prescribing all the painkillers and everything like that, to reduce those prescribing practices in our system, so we don't have the biggest problem out there on the streets as well? So that's one really important group. We have another group that's looking at our adult treatment continuum and our crisis services for adults across the system. So it's looking at everything we have in the system, that we currently have built, all the contracts, providers we have across all our counties, and looking at that saying, is this working? Is there anything missing in this? Can we do anything better in that treatment continuum of services in our system? So they're looking at that. For, in some instances, in some of your groups, we have substance abuse intensive outpatient programs in each of your counties. In some of those counties, there's only six people sitting in those groups, but yet, we know huge volumes of people that need those services. So why aren't those services being accessed? Is it an education issue? What's going on in those treatment systems? How can we do a better job of making sure that people know that that's available to them in their counties? They're also looking at our crisis services. So what happens when somebody's in crisis and they need to be detoxed from a substance? Where do they go? How do they access that? A lot of the people in our EDs right now are people that are there for detox. They're not having a psychiatric crisis as much as they are, they're there for a substance abuse problem. In our facility-based crisis centers across our region right now, and those are, you know, for people that are having psychiatric as well as detox substance abuse issues, right now, the majority of those people taking their beds are people in there for detox, not in there for a mental health crisis. So how do we improve that system? How do we provide support to them? That's that subcommittee there. We have another subcommittee that's looking at the child treatment continuum for services. If we want to talk about a small pot of money for adults with substance abuse problems, let's talk about the pot of money available for kids with a substance abuse problem. Very, very tiny. We're talking about probably, I don't know, if I had to guess, $100,000 for everyone across all of our counties. And that doesn't go very far. So we're really trying to do different work, of trying to really support that. That group's also looking at our prevention services. You know, what are we doing to help educate the system, and where can we use prevention to really save us some costs? Because as Christina said, the, the bell curve on this, we can't keep up with that. The money's not keeping up with that, so we got to do something on the front end to try to curve, bend that curve a little bit for us. So they're looking at those prevention-related services in that group. And then, the last group we have is a group that's specifically looking at the substance abuse problem with women that are pregnant. Because they touch so many parts of our system, what can we do to better serve that targeted population across our system? So these subcommittees have started meeting to discuss specific areas in each of their areas. And they're going to be providing recommendations to the steering committee on how to specifically target some key areas in each of those subcommittees. The important piece of that is, I think it's in their packet, their, their regional stuff, is that in there?
You have the charters.
Okay.
The list of executive committee, and the list of grantee groups.
So one thing that we know really well, is if you look at this chart, you'll kind of see what we're trying to do with these groups. So on the very bottom part of this chart, the one thing that we know really well is that we've been trying to work on these problems for a really long time. And each of your communities have substance abuse coalitions, they have prevention groups, they have people that are really smart, that are really doing really good work, and are trying to do that on a local level, which is great. But what we are trying to do is trying to get a systemic issue addressed across the region. So what we're, so what we've done in developing these subcommittees that I just mentioned, we're trying to pull people from your local coalition that have experience in those areas where we can, and pull them into those groups. Now, one of the challenges we have is these subcommittees can't get big. We can't be like, you know, open arms, let's have 50 people at the table, because the work slows down, you can't get anything done. So we have been really targeted to say, okay, these groups are going to be no more than 10 people. And so not every county is going to be in every group, of course, but we're really trying to find the influential people in some of those subcommittees, because some of the conversations that may be happening in the Yancy substance abuse coalition are the same conversations that are happening over in Avery County. Same issues we're dealing with, so we're really looking for those players at the table that can really bring that insight to the table. So those local subcommittees are then hopefully represented on our subcommittees that are feeding up to the committees. So we're really trying to get that ground-up information to the steering committee. The next task for us is, once those steering committees tries to focus in on what the problem is, we really want to push that back down. So those subcommittees are going to be pushing it back down to your local groups and your coalitions in your counties to say, hey, join with us on this plan, and let's all work together to focus on these areas where we think we can have the greatest impact. So those conversations on the local level, that's, you know, your nonprofit organizations in your county that are raising money, your United Ways that are raising money, that are trying to address these problems, to get all of those groups working together to focus on these key areas in your local communities, so we can then collaborate and partner to try to really make a difference across that system, across western North Carolina. So that's what that group's doing. In the other room, this is a kind of the representation, as people start talking to you about what that, you know, what's going on. You should probably, after tonight, probably in the next, I don't know, Christina, in the next two to three weeks, we probably should see some stuff coming out from that group, or what the recommendations are. And then that will be disseminated, you know, to each of you guys and to our local partners. There'll probably be a press release that will be coming out from that group around, you know, these are some strategic areas that we're looking to push out. So...
I would just say that of all the things we've done as an organization, this initiative, the substance abuse initiative that Donald's talking about, we've picked that by more newspapers, radio stations than anything we've ever done. I would also say, is any of you who stay in your communities and say, is anybody doing anything about this? Have them call somebody, have them call Sarah or one of these regional folks, or Brian or Shelly, and get them on this list, if they want to participate. The western region leadership of the healthcare system is saying, we're, this is our plan as a western region for this epidemic. So this is a very powerful group that represents all of you and many other people, so please, you know, if you hear this in your communities, there is a place where things are really, really happening, and the legislative agenda is being created, which hopefully is going to, we hope, is going to get somebody to fund some of this need that we have in our communities. So please, you know, I know many of you are doing really great things locally, we know a lot about your local things that you're doing, this, this gives it a meaning to come up at a much higher level, where we can fight for what we really need for people to be really honest.
So you'll see in your packet, there's actually a list of everyone that's on the subcommittees and the steering committee. So if you get approached by any of your local coalition people and say, hey, we're not part of that, what's going on with that? Look on the list and, and get them in contact with the chairs of these committees, and we'll make sure that we're communicating with those individuals and making sure we're getting information out.
Is that stepping up?
No, yeah.
This is a big county commissioner thing. It's a national thing.
How many of you guys have heard of stepping up? So I don't have to like create that. We got, we got one, two, three, four. So I will, I will do my best to talk about that and Shelly's opinion, but the, this is a national movement around stepping up, and it's really targeted towards mental health, substance abuse issues in your jails. We know that's been a growing population. We know from our data that individuals are cycling in and out of your jails with mental health and substance problems, and a large number of those are these uninsured people that we're talking about. You know, there's some Medicaid in here, but there's large volumes of uninsured. These are the same people that are clogging the EDs. And when we look at the data across our system, and across yours, we see that the reason why they're not in jail this week is because they were in the hospital that week. And then the next week, you know, they're in your jail. So there's lots of discussion around, what can we do to really target these individuals? A lot of these individuals aren't going to show up to one of our treatment providers. They really don't want to show up to one of our treatment providers, and some of them may not even think they necessarily have a problem. Or their mental illness is so bad, they really don't even, they're not even operating on that level, to where they can just engage in treatment services. So it takes a very different approach on how we target them. So the national movement, and now North Carolina, is really targeted at, how do we target these individuals from, one, catching them before they get into the jail, and then two, making sure when they come out of the jail, they're really well-connected, so they don't show back up into jail, or show back up into ED. Now, the reason, no, this is Donald's here, one of the reasons they call it the stepping up, is because in order to do this, counties really have to step up to the plate. Because it's, this issue is, is not just a mental health issue, it's not an issue that Vaya can fix all by ourselves. These are, only the way we can address these issues in the jail is to have a true systemic program that focuses on that jail and how we support them. And in most instances, it calls for the counties to step up with some funding as well, to say, if, an ounce of prevention equals a pound of cure for some of these individuals. And if we can put a little money to divert these people from our jails, it will save us a lot of money, you know, on our county system. I like to use Boncom around that, because people use them all around the state, they have a very strong jail diversion program that we've built over the years, we've worked with them on some of that. And they, they make roughly a million dollars, I think it's a million dollars a year on their empty jail beds by selling them to the feds. So they really invested into their jail diversion out of their county funds to see that by diverting those people out of their beds frees up their jail resources, they're not having to go and build a brand-new jail facility every, you know, five, six years to hold more and more people at a, at a significant cost. So we know that, you know, I was talking with them this morning, and they're like, well, they're hoping that holds out, the population is getting so big, it's hard to hold it tight back. So talking about those issues. So Shelly, why don't you talk a little bit about the actual resolution and, and what that process looks like?
Right. First of all, I'm so excited that some of you mentioned this, as you were coming in today, and we talked a little bit about it. and we talked a little bit about it. One of the things that Donald has gotten us connected with is a state planning group that includes some of the folks from the Division of Mental Health that, with evidence-based practices, has Jason King from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, has a whole variety of community or state-level partners, whose goal is to bring stepping up into North Carolina and to help support counties enrolling it out. As Donald said, one of the most important things is, we are a partner in this, but you are leaders. County government, Sheriff's Department, the judicial system, the DA's office, all of those folks really have to agree and lead and desire to do this kind of, one, planning process and implementation to make this successful. But we have agreed, because we're a part of that planning committee at the state, is to help roll this out and to give you as counties the opportunity to see if you have interest. So what we wanted to do tonight is say that, in working with this conference, we want you to know that on May 9th, the day before County Assembly Day, so we planned to say you to hopefully already be in Raleigh, there's going to be a statewide conference at the McKinnon Center in Raleigh. During that conference, counties are gonna be invited, and Brian and Sarah and I are gonna be working with you guys to try to get some participation. But basically, that conference will be for counties to come and learn, where do you start? How do you do this? How do you bring a community together around planning? How do you look at what's happening on the front end? What happens to people when they leave prison? And trying to really create a community planning process with the jail diversion program being a part of that. The counties will be asked to have leaders to come to this conference, local government, local county managers, county commissioners. We'd like to have representation from your DA's office, from the judicial system, really the community partners that can help really roll this out in your communities. So we're asking tonight that you read up, we've provided you a whole lot of information, an overview of the stepping up program, some information about what it means by reducing the number of people with behavioral health issues in jail. I included a PowerPoint that was done at the NACO meeting that talks about stepping up. And then asked you to really put that May 9th date on your calendar, and to begin talking to your local community partners, the sheriff, like I said, the DA's office, and your court judge, and see if you might be able to elicit some participation. Just one idea to keep in mind, for instance, in the southwestern counties, we have one judicial district. So, we are working on getting someone from our DA's office, and someone from underneath Judge Letts or Chief Court Judge, to represent all of our southern counties. So look at your judicial districts, you don't have to have, you know, one person from every county, but really be strategic. So we'll be sending you out more information, we're gonna see if anyone's interested, we'll help you with getting people there, getting registered, and you'll learn everything you need to know. We'll actually have three programs that we'll be talking about, how they started, how they funded, how they continue to fund it, and how it saves money for the future.
Well, one thing I'll add to that, Paige mentioned the jail diversion program for counties, that's, that's will be one of the initiatives that we're looking at. We have the Boncom County Initiative, but that's a program in a fairly large area of counties, right? So we're really using Paige's model, and working with them in Transylvania County, to really demonstrate that these models can also work in smaller rural counties, smaller jails, they look a little different, but they still work and they're still functional. So that's, you know, part of the initiative we're working on with Transylvania Paige.
Well, I just wanted to say, NACO has been really pushing this as well, as you've said, and there's some webinars that NACO's done, and that's actually why I got most excited about it, was listening to the Pitt County Assistant Manager. Holy moly, if that doesn't sell you one, I don't know what will. They've saved a million too in their jail with the diversion program.
But you said it's on the NACO website?
Well, I was just Googling it to see if I could pull it up, because I took, I signed up for the webinar, went through it, and then got an email thanking me for attending and telling me that I could access it on their website, so I...
We'll look and see if we can find it and send guidance.
Yeah, and share it, yeah, if you can share it with everybody, that'd be great, because they are doing, there's another one coming up, I think, like the next set. So if you go to the NACO website, they've got a lot of information about it. But it's pretty exciting, just looked at the Pitt County Assistant Manager, holy, moly.
I believe they'll be at the conference, they're gonna be one of the programs. And we really are focusing the conference, Donald and I have been participating, to make it valuable to you. We want you to get the, here's how we started, here's how we did it, here's how it works, so that it's very valuable, not just a lot of, you know, a lot of information. Okay, thank you.
You ready to leave? For that gap analysis?
Yeah. Okay, I'll take, hey, I'll speak briefly on that. Hopefully, all you guys by now know how important our gap analysis is to our system. So, I believe everyone in this room, if not, should have received a notice from us asking you to fill out a survey. Anybody not get that email?
The timing, that we, all of the managers have it, and are the people who are on this board that were here in 2016, but many of the people, some of the commissioners have got it, were from 2016 versus this new year, based on the...
Gotcha. And, and...
That's not their fault.
Okay. Okay, you're off the hook if you're on the new one, okay. So one of the interesting things the state does is, we always do a retrospective look in our annual gap analysis. Now, I always struggle with that, because we do this gap analysis of services that were provided a year ago, of what we missed, and I always like to argue with the state, yeah, but we've already fixed that, you know? Why don't you just look at that and tell you it's a gap, like, we've already, we already knew that was a problem, we've already fixed that in the new one, can't you look at the new information? But that's not the way it works. So, so the really important pieces in our data is retrospectively look on what's happened in the previous year. But what gives us the foresight going forward into the new year is this community need assessment. This is the real-time data feedback in our system that we get from each of you guys. So you see on the, on the first page, or page one of your paper, we had 1,451 responses to our community need assessment this year, great number. I believe that's up 11%, is that what it came out to be? Which is great, we wanna keep pushing that up. Last year, we thought that was a great number, so we're gonna keep increasing it. We want more and more people to participate in, because if you've done any study at all, the larger you're in, or the number of people participating in it, the more valid your information is. So we constantly wanna get that information out, because we don't want one person that had one bad experience with services that completely skewed the results across the survey. And generally, we know from surveys, let's all admit it, that you're usually more responsive to a survey if you got something bad to say than when you wanna say something positive, right? Because that's the way surveys work. So, it's important for us to push out the information to enough people, for us to get enough responses to us to have, to have that generalized across the population. So, just wanted to say that. Participation, you'll see on the grid there, what our participation looks like. We definitely would like to have more participation from your county governments, your commissioners. You'll see there, our participation was a little low this year, we only got 13 responses from board members and from county commissioner-level people. We'd like to see that go up with you guys, so that's just like a nice little push. Next year, to remember to get that information in there, because you guys have valuable information from all your constituents that you're probably getting, that you could share with us. So you guys not only represent one, you could be representing lots of people in your survey results. So we definitely want you guys to continue to look at that. Big increase on our community stakeholders and our network providers this year, you know, went up from 691 last year to 927. That's, that's great. Definitely want that, showing our stakeholders are really participating in the process. Family members went about the same. We really want a lot more participation from families and members that are actually receiving services. Because when you really think about it, they have had the direct contact with our services more than our providers, more than our stakeholders, even more than you guys. They're experiencing our providers every day, so their input is very valuable to us. So, if you guys can be thinking out areas of how we can get that out better to our families and our members, we're definitely interested in getting that out. You'll see on the next page, participation across your counties. So if you see that you have a small number next year county, we wanna do better in that county next year. If you have a big number, we thank you a lot for your number. So, be looking at that and seeing how you can help in each of your counties. We also gave a breakdown by agency at the bottom grid, so you can kinda have an idea of which of your local stakeholders are actually responding to our survey as well. Last but not least, I'll draw your attention to the back, which is our timeline for completing our needs assessment. Our community evaluation part for the survey has closed, so we have that. We're currently writing, taking that information from the survey now, and trying to identify what were the identified needs from all these recipients that they mentioned. And we're pulling that into our needs evaluations to say, this is what was represented as a need. We've also started working on our data analytics, which we base, when we take our data analytics, what we do is, we do an analysis of the services we have in our network currently, and we overlay that on a map by the members in each of your counties, where they're coming from. So we actually take the individual's home address, we plot it on a map, we plot where our services are, and we make sure in each of your counties that anybody needing services has access to any particular service that we offer. And in urban counties, if you're in an urban county, we have to document they have access to those services within 30 minutes or 30 miles of their house. And in rural counties, we have to document they have access within 45 minutes or 45 miles to their house. Now, in the mountains, in some counties, we know, they may live just right across the hill, but it takes 40 minutes to get there. We take that into account. If they, you may be able to walk there in 30, but if it takes 45 minutes driving, we're out of compliance with that, too. We take the actual drive time mapping of every individual's home location and plot it on a map to determine access to that. So we take that information, we overlay it with your community needs assessment, everything, the information, and where we have, and we use both of that information to write our gap's report of saying, based on this analytic information and our responses from our community, this is where we see our needs are across our system. And then that information feeds into what we call our Network Development Plan, and that's where we're gonna target services in each of your communities going into the next year. And making sure that your citizens, our members, have access to those services. So if we see that it takes somebody in your county an hour to get a service, then when we're looking at contracts, we're gonna try to find somebody to do that service that's a little closer to people in your community to get that service locally. Now, in the majority of services, that's the target. There are another core set of services, like inpatient hospitalization, where those become regional services and they sit outside those standards. So, yeah, somebody may have to drive to Mission Hospital for a psychiatric inpatient hospitalization, and those become acceptable, because that's not something, we can't just build a hospital in the middle of the national park with psychiatric beds in order to meet some of those standards. So there's some services that fall outside there, we also document those in our gap analysis when we get that document. Once the document's done, you guys will have a copy of that, I'd encourage you guys to look at that document, see what it says about your counties. What Christina said about the penetration rates for your counties, that information is in that gap analysis. It will tell you the population of your county, it will tell you what's the prevalence rate for people with disability areas in your counties, and how good are we doing at penetrating those disabilities within your individual areas. All that information's in there, it's great, it's a lot of information, somebody, a lot of times people get it, and they're like, woo, I'm gonna prop up my table with this, or you know, prop up their child so they can reach the table, it's so thick. And they don't really take the time to look at it. But I'd encourage you to look at the sections, particularly the grid, you can get a lot of information just looking at the pictures, and not even have to get into the narratives around your particular county, services that are available, and what may be important to you. And then I would challenge you, if you see something that looks skewed, or maybe we missed something in your county, let us know that as well. Because, you know, we are, we are pulling data, and survey data is subjective data, and we're applying it to our analytic data, and there could be pieces, especially around specialty populations, that could be missed in some of that information. So, we're always open to that conversation of what we can do locally on, in each of your counties to try to get better services in that area. So that's just a quick overview of kinda where we're at with the survey, where we're going, and a little bit how you can use that in each of your communities going forward.
So do you think you'll be able to come back and do an overview of the gap analysis, just not by county, but overall, and maybe the Network Development Plan, or what?
Probably use the phone. It's gonna be a while. It would be a while. But normally, if you've been part of this group, we did a high overview last year. So I think we would come back, you actually have access to it, we'll make sure you have whatever copy, any way you want it, and then try to hit the highlights of it. But I think that it really is the foundation of how we spend our money, who we serve, the providers that we, you know, build and contract with in your local communities. It's all connected all the way up to BIA's strategic plan that our board of directors sign off on. So it's all connected at the end of the day.
Yeah, part of that, it goes all the way up to the state, too?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the state holds us accountable that we're out of compliance, or we're weak in an area, what are we doing to fix it? So, you know, we try to address that, and make sure that we're addressing that in our plan. And we always put some really good information in our plan around specialty projects that we're working on. So it really gives you some information to where you may read in there, like, what we're doing with the jail diversion program in Transylvania, and you may say, why aren't we doing something like that in Clay County? Maybe we should, maybe we should call up Shelley and ask her, you know, if we can do something similar in Clay, and we can have that same conversation. So it gives you some information of kind of some things that are going around in each of the areas, and what may be of interest to you in your particular county as well.
Board of Director.
Yep. Any questions?
You're probably saturated. One more thing we wanna share.
Surprise!
Then you wanna start on dinner again?
Yeah, so I wanna just talk briefly about the MyCare kiosk, and just for the record, we did not pay Paige for that promotion of the project, she was really excited in Transylvania, was the first county that got one of these. So, BIA, it makes me say Smokey, I don't know if you've ever seen it in the room, BIA, as part of our Community and Capital Reinvestment Plan, put money aside to purchase one of these kiosks for each of the 23 counties. So we've been working, Donald's department and some of the community outreach folks have been working really hard to identify sites. We've done that in each of your communities through all the committees and meetings that we're a part of, it's hundreds of meetings across the area that we're asked to be at or a part of in some way. So really brainstorming with those individuals around the best places in the county to really maybe catch foot traffic for folks that aren't utilizing services currently. These kiosks are intended to increase awareness, reduce stigma, and increase access to services. The kiosk is just a little, I call it kind of a little cubicle, it's just a little desk with some privacy walls, has a touchscreen privacy screen in it, also has a telephone. So what we're hoping is, at some point when we've done a good enough job promoting this, and you guys promote this, people will use this as often as they do the blood pressure machine in Walmart. And we're hoping folks will just be curious, sit down, there's 11 different assessments or screenings they can use, so different screenings they can access, and it will, depending on their answers, it will maybe prompt them to seek services, or even make a telephone call to our Access to Care Center. So there's a phone in the booth that the person actually can call and get an appointment. We've already unveiled four of these, I think, I think, Transylvania, Yancey, Ash, I was in Ash on Friday, and then Haywood on Monday. We have, you've got two handouts here. We have, you've got two handouts here. There are two more that are being planned currently that we actually have the machines. Our order was the largest order this company had received. So we were only able to get them in blocks and sixes. So we're currently planning Macon and Coggo County. And then you'll see on the, your second document, the other counties that are the next six to go. And it actually looks like seven. But if you don't see your county on here, don't worry. We're getting all these out hopefully, I would say, May-ish, no? May-ish, June. So we're getting them six at a time, setting it up. One thing that'd be really important for you to know is you're probably asked to attend or to speak at these events. And so really, by the media, we had a reporter on Friday. I'm sure Peggy was there on Monday to really promote this and to help folks be educated about these locations and what this could do for them. We think that it will get that person that is not willing to make a call and just ask those questions, someone that's just curious. You know, should I be concerned about this? Is there something I should do to get support for whatever's going on in the law? Any questions?
What's the schedule of analytics we'll get from the utilization?
Yeah, so I heard that after the first 90 days, we think that we'll be able to have a good picture of that. And it'll be staggered because obviously you guys were first. And that's what I failed to mention is, from the bias side, we can't see actually who's doing the screening, but we can see aggregate data. So I think that will actually play into our gaps analysis in future years to see that a particular county, there's a huge spike in this county around substance use services or PTSD or whatever. So that actually could help us plan for services in the future. And we also have the capability after some time to actually reposition and relocate this unit if there's not good foot traffic for some reason. We don't want to do that very often, but if we see it's not being utilized as a library, maybe we'll find a better town hall or a couple more or somewhere that's a better location.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
They're super cool. You really want one.
Right, and we got TV and any, or any newspapers covering that.
Yeah, we got satellite.
We made, ours made it above the fold on B section of the twice-weekly Transylvania line. Just in case you.
That would be, people start seeing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We had a reporter in Ash. We've had some bugs and different, at the different operations. Yes, on our Facebook page. And we've had good success lately. Christina was talking about the substance use task force. It was on the front page of one of the newspapers recently. So we've been getting more programs, hopefully.
With that, unless there's anything else? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming for orientation. The force has been with us. And don't forget to do your mileage sheets and sign them and turn them into Tammy before you leave. And don't forget to do your survey, your email where you're being asked about the meeting dates that would be most convenient. So please do that. And we'll be back in touch about what our findings are around the meeting schedule.
Drink some coffee before you leave. Stay awake.
Yeah.
Now, again, it's a pretty good trip.
Bill, I just want to thank you for allowing such a great conversation at the meeting tonight. I really felt like we had a chance to hash through some things. And I don't think we felt rushed tonight. So I'm very, very grateful for your leadership and seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tell Bill, we want him to continue that.
Thank you.